I'm your new backyard neighbor and I wanted to introduce myself. And because you have such pretty trees in the back, I want to put some topping over it because we're going to sandblast the house. I really don't know my backyard neighbors. I looked at her with a little doubt, but then I said, I really don't want to antagonize her. She's going to be my backyard neighbor. So I very foolishly let her into the house and into the backyard. And into the process, I forgot to close the lock on the door. She knew every part of my backyard and she knew my neighbor's backyard. She said, well, the pool is too close to the house and your fence is rickety. I said, I know. She said, oh, but don't worry, we're going to fix everything. You don't have to worry about anything.
Well, the suspects in the case are very smooth. They're very good with their verbal skills and they're able to fool the victims into believing whatever it is that they're trying to get the victims to believe. And it generally only takes a few minutes and the victims are very compliant and the suspects make off with their valuables in just a few minutes.
I'm learning from my own mistakes and at this age, I didn't think I had that much to learn, but I obviously do.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
In LA This Week. I'm Anna Marcos. Parks around the country are struggling with how to deal with their homeless residents. This Innovation Lab provides some solutions and insights coming up.
A lasting tribute to a Hollywood legend is restored to its original glory. I'm Gil Reyes. Here it is behind me. I'll have the story next.
I'm Rasha Goel. Up next, why this 1,000-ton machine is pivotal for the LA metro transit system.
Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana K. Well, it's the biggest census survey of its kind. The 2017 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count takes a yearly headcount of those on the streets. But the goal is about a lot more than just collecting cold, hard numbers. Anna Marcos explains.
Are there any volunteers in the house tonight? That's what I'm talking about.
A rallying of the troops as more than 7,000 volunteers arm themselves with vests, clipboards, and flashlights, then head out into the streets to make sure LA's homeless residents get counted.
The fact that our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness on our streets matter, they matter to us, and the information that you're gathering matters to us. There's no other way to do this.
Seven people?
Seven, yeah.
This is the yearly Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count. Three nights in which the volunteers scour alleys, abandoned lots, bushes, strip malls, parks, and yes, even sidewalks in business districts. Any place where a homeless person might put up a tent or lay down a sleeping bag or even park a vehicle in which to curl up for the night.
I expect to be reminded of all the things I'm really lucky to have, a roof over my head and a place to go and people that are looking out for me and safety nets that these people don't have.
I just want to be part of solving the problem.
Organizers want to know how many and what kind of people call the streets home so they can better target homeless services and funding. A simple headcount is all that's needed, but volunteers will also fill out more detailed surveys on homeless residents willing to talk. Something new on these streets, according to the census takers. In the last couple of years, the number of homeless women has increased by 55%.
I understand and I have seen how harsh it is out there. And I definitely hope that I can get an accurate count so we can come back and count those numbers and get some more money from federal and county.
By the time the three nights are over, volunteers will have covered every corner of the greater LA area and hopefully helped all its homeless residents stand up and be counted. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count is put on by the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority with the help of community groups and city leaders. Homelessness has reached into every nook and cranny of our public open spaces, including parks where many people who are homeless find refuge. But now Recreation and Parks officials are working to stem the tide. And it all starts with some basic human outreach. Anna Marcos has the details.
More and more homeless people are setting up camp and city parks, and that means new challenges for park workers and rangers. For those without a roof, the parks are often a safe haven from the daily struggle of life on the streets.
I have schizophrenia and that is what took me into homelessness. I found this old abandoned park, but this place was the only place that I felt safe.
The National Recreation and Park Association has put on the Innovation Lab with LA's Department of Recreation and Parks to help park workers across the country think outside the box in hammering out solutions.
But the reality is that park directors have a balance between opening their parks up to homeless and then also welcoming families. And sometimes that is where there's some friction.
It is law that you cannot have a tent in a city park. You cannot camp in a city park.
Several formerly homeless people who once lived in parks gave valuable insights here today. For example, one woman lived in a park for 25 years and no one ever contacted her or talked to her until someone finally did, got her into housing, and changed her life.
I was one of those people that were in the vegetate state.
Five years later, Carrie Bales has become an advocate for the homeless, and she recently volunteered in her first homeless census count.
The homeless count, which I was so grateful to be part of the other night and be in the same area that I was homeless. It was five years later, people that are, you know, that some people can't reach, I can.
These formerly homeless advocates had some advice for park directors. For example, stop and talk to homeless people you see and be ready with help and services.
Have a place for them to get the resources they need.
Together we can, we can end this, we can do this.
The hope is that insights shared here just might make the difference in getting more homeless people humanely off the streets. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Now, you'll soon be able to give your input on the issue by voting for or against Measure H in the city's March elections. The measure would impose a quarter cent sales tax on LA residents to pay for mental health and other services for people who are homeless. Turning now to another hot-button topic, immigration. President Trump's plan for mass deportations won't receive help from the city of Los Angeles, but LA's defiance could end up costing money under Trump's executive order. Gil Reyes has more.
If federal agents want to round up LA's undocumented immigrants, they'll have to do it without assistance from the Los Angeles Police Department.
The LAPD is not responsible for the enforcement of federal immigration laws.
At the city's first Immigration Committee meeting, it's all about Donald Trump and the city's refusal to lend resources like LAPD to the president's deportation agenda. City leaders mention Special Order 40, a local mandate created in 1979 that prohibits LAPD officers from questioning or detaining people solely for the purpose of determining their immigration status.
This has proven to reduce crime because people are not fearful of approaching our officers, whether they're victims or witnesses. We also want to move forward to see what else we can do should the federal government attempt to take away our federal funding because of our support for individuals.
The city of Los Angeles receives an estimated $500 million a year from the federal government to fund such things as port security, help for seniors and veterans, also anti-gang programs. President Trump's executive order would cut such funding for so-called sanctuary cities like Los Angeles who refuse to cooperate with his immigration raids. Whether or not the president has the legal authority to do this is still unclear. However, LA city leaders have this message.
Los Angeles is and will continue to be a place of refuge for people from all walks of life, regardless of one's background, income, sexual orientation, religious affiliation, or immigration status. I immigrated from South Korea when I was six years old. I am both the product and beneficiary of the diversity that we celebrate here in Los Angeles.
Leaders in both houses of the state legislature feel the same way. At Los Angeles City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Other big cities like San Francisco, New York, and Chicago are taking similar stands against the president at the risk of losing federal dollars. While heading over to the North Valley, where a new study says that a little street improvement can go a long way in stopping prostitution. Anna Marcos has more.
Can trimming trees and bushes really take a bite out of crime and prostitution? City leaders and residents in the North Valley are counting on it. The results of their new study tell them to start chopping.
I have a business on Lankers Hill, and when I had a customer walk in my door and say, I almost didn't come in because of all the prostitutes out there, hookers actually. My little four-year-old said to me, mommy, what's a hooker? You don't want your child to grow up knowing those words.
This corner of the valley near Sepulveda and Valerio Street has long been a hotbed of prostitution and sex trafficking.
Since I grew up here my entire life, and we've always known that there has been prostitution activity on this track. The differences, I will tell you, is over the last couple of years, the age of the women who they traffic on this corridor has gotten younger and younger and younger.
Last year, the LAPD created its Valley Bureau Human Trafficking Task Force, which targets the pimps, johns, and prostitutes who work the area.
How many pimps have we arrested? 22 pimps over this year alone.
City leaders have also teamed up with researchers at Cal State Northridge and released the results of the new study. It shows this area with its dark, unlit streets and parking lots and overgrown bushes does much to encourage shady dealings.
What we did, we end up like following the prostitutes and johns and finding out exactly where they went. There are businesses, there are schools, churches, that at nighttime, they are not utilized, their parking lots are dark, left empty, they are not gated, and many johns and prostitutes, they use those facilities.
Researchers recommend tree trimming along with added lighting in 40 areas. Other suggestions: new fencing, surveillance cameras, street dividers, and no stopping and no turning signs to give police more reason to stop the violators. But city leaders say they can't do it alone.
I'd ask every apartment manager, owner, install cameras. Look at the own lighting on your buildings. Look at motion detectors. Look at having your shrubs trimmed back so people can't hide out in the shadows.
Councilmember Nury Martinez has come up with $780,000 for the project, a payout city leaders hope pays off big time in reducing the sex trafficking and prostitution that go on in the dark. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
To report sex trafficking and prostitution, visit 647 TIPS at LAPD online. While Metro is using cutting-edge technology to drill through the earth, Rasha Goel has more on this giant machine that is as heavy as 13 Endeavour shuttles.
Yana, I'm here in what they refer to as the pit at First and Central in downtown Los Angeles. Now, what you see behind me is the tunnel boring machine. It is 1,000 tons, 400 feet long. And why this machine is important is it's part of the Regional Connector Transit Project. And what it's going to do is dig a tunnel all the way to Second and Hope from here. Now, this is part of the bigger project, which is really aimed at connecting the Expo, Gold, and Blue lines here in downtown Los Angeles.
This tunnel boring machine will bore through the earth at an average of about 65 feet per day.
The machine is like a giant drill that will dig twin 1.1-mile underground light rail tunnels, which will connect three new stations from Little Tokyo to the financial district.
One here at First and Central. The second station is on Second Street of Broadway, between Broadway and Spring. The third station is at Bunker Hill, and then it will join Seventh and Metro Station.
Through this Metro Regional Connector Transit Project, passengers will be able to travel from Long Beach to Azusa and East LA to Santa Monica.
It'll add around 90,000 passengers per day and it'll provide a lot more convenient ride for transit passengers.
This particular project will really connect the whole rail system here in LA County.
The launch of this machine marks a milestone for the project as the first tunnel is constructed. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The official line is expected to open in 2021. Well, turning now to Hollywood awards season, and during this time, we remember the first Mexican-born actor to win an Oscar. Gil Reyes shows us the recently restored Pope of Broadway mural honoring the late, great Anthony Quinn.
Many people say it's Anthony Quinn's greatest film, and that's saying a lot. 1964 Zorba the Greek captivated movie audiences and even inspired artist Eloy Torres to paint the 70-foot-tall Zorba mural in downtown Los Angeles. That was in 1985. More recently, what's known as the Pope of Broadway mural received a much-needed makeover.
I'm happy with it. I pump up the colors a little bit because in anticipation of that it's going to fade because it's south-facing walls, so it gets a lot of sun.
Here's how it looked before the spruce up. Here's how it looks today. Torres worked with Quinn's family, a restoration expert, and councilman Jose Wezar to restore its original look. The entire process took about eight years. This artwork is not only a tribute to the two-time Academy Award-winning actor, but also, if you look closely, his arms are outstretched. The artist intended this to be a sort of welcoming gesture for all people of Los Angeles. By the way, Anthony Quinn had also performed nearby at the Million Dollar Theater, which is also here in downtown LA.
For him to make it the way he did at the time he did, where people were not as accepting of Latinos in Hollywood, it's a great thing to honor such a great man, honor such a great mural.
Oscar-nominated actor Edward James Olmos is also a big fan of Anthony Quinn's and the mural.
Art really breathes life into humanity, and we need it. And this is going to be very inspirational. When people go by, they're going to just be very happy. And they won't even know why. They're just looking and go, wow, look at how beautiful that is.
In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
And you can see the Pope of Broadway mural live and in person at Third and Broadway in downtown. An African-American legend was among those recognized at the city's African-American Heritage Month kickoff. Rasha Goel was there.
At 82, he is vivacious as ever. Legendary music artist Johnny Mathis was among the honorees who received Hall of Fame Awards at the city's kickoff for African-American Heritage Month.
It's a great honor. Half of the city has been here, I think. And I'm just thrilled, yeah. It's very exciting.
Mathis received a Lifetime Achievement Award for his contribution to music. He is known for his smooth ballads and vocals and has sold over 350 million records worldwide. Another award winner was Michelle King, who received the Hall of Fame Award in Education. King is the first African-American superintendent of the LA Unified School District, which is the second largest in the nation.
LA Unified is 80% youth in poverty, 90% youth of color. And my message to them is students, it's time to go to work. It's time to go to work and to get your education because it's that that will determine and secure your future.
Honoree Matthew Johnson, president of the Los Angeles Police Department Commission, received the Hall of Fame Award in government. And Hall of Fame Award in Law was given to Andre Barot, U.S. District Judge for the Central District of California. He was the first African-American U.S. Attorney for the Central District.
It is also a city of dreams that allowed me, as a young son of Haitian immigrants, to move out here from New Jersey at the age of 20, not knowing a single soul in this entire state, to go out to law school to pursue a dream, a dream of being a lawyer.
A reception followed at City Hall South Lawn. As it does every year to celebrate African-American Heritage Month, the U.S. Postal Service releases a stamp highlighting someone from the African-American community. This year's honor went to Dorothy Height, a prominent civil rights activist for women's rights.
She paved the way for many people.
African-American Heritage Month in LA has been a tradition since 1949. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
For more information on activities happening throughout the month, you can log on to culturela.org. Well, more than 60,000 Angelenos flock to downtown's Broadway District for a huge night out that mixed business and pleasure, and a big bash was all for free. Anna Marcos was there.
It was standing room only at this neighborhood party. The Night on Broadway event opened its doors up the entire length of Broadway downtown, and everyone was invited.
And we're going to do fun stuff. We're going to the Village Will.
Exotic creatures were on show. This one tried to spread its wings in flight, but well, it never quite got off the ground.
Have a good time and be crazy, drink, eat, bring me tacos and pizza.
And look at this, a combo chess and boxing match. Councilmember Jose Wezar refereed the match like a pro, sort of.
Four, three, two, one.
The guys played chess and boxed, then played chess and boxed again, and then it got dark, and still they boxed and played chess. All the fun and frolic had a serious reason behind it. The Night on Broadway party is part of Wezar's Bringing Back Broadway, a 10-year revitalization plan. This is year number three for the party, but year number nine for the revitalization plan.
And so what we wanted to do is to get a new streetscape plan. We have a new sign ordinance that's getting back the neon and the glade signs of the 20s and 30s. We're also bringing back the streetcar. So we're doing a lot of things to revitalize the street. And part of what we're doing with Night on Broadway is to showcase it. And we also have a lot more businesses coming in, and most of these theaters are back to life.
It's beautiful. They shut down Broadway. It's fantastic to be able to walk and go into all these old theaters. It's fantastic.
10 different stages, six historic theaters behind me, and in between every kind of performance under the sun with hundreds of artists.
Anytime there's something fun happening on the streets, it's a good time to get up.
But if art was more your style, there was art you could look at and there was art you could create at. Artwork not your thing? Well, there was plenty of music, psychedelic light shows, food trucks, and even, it seems, some psychiatric help available. Of course, everyone has a favorite. We have to give it to the flame swallowers and those playing with flame hula hoops. And oh my, this guy just went up in flames, but he did have a very thick flame retardant suit on. We think he was all right. All in all, a fiery night of first-class entertainment. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And next year, for the 10th anniversary of the Bringing Back Broadway initiative, the party promises to be the biggest extravaganza yet. While City Council lays the groundwork for hosting the 2024 Olympic Games, a new development near the Beverly Center will soon be taking shape, and the city marks the Year of the Rooster. All these stories in City Beat. The LA City Council approved the contract it would sign if LA lands the 2024 Summer Olympics, along with a final list of venues for events and a plan to use both the Memorial Coliseum and the planned NFL Stadium in Inglewood for the opening and closing ceremonies. LA 2024 has proposed a privately financed balanced budget of $5.3 billion for the Games, although LA must cover any budget shortfalls according to the contract. Part of the budget plan is to only use existing venues like the Coliseum and Staples Center and not build any new permanent buildings just for the Games and to capitalize on the billions of transportation improvements the city already has planned. Paris and Budapest are also in the running to host the Games. The Council also approved a 145-unit residential complex to be built near the Beverly Center by the Grove developer Rick Caruso. The project was okayed after Caruso agreed to reduce the building's height by 55 feet, taking it from 20 stories to 16, representing a compromise with community activists calling for a limit to tall buildings in the neighborhood. The complex will offer 14 units at below-market rents and will also feature a restaurant, market, and plaza. Construction is expected to begin later this year. LA City Council members recognize the 2017 Lunar New Year with a presentation and celebration in council chambers, complete with lion dancers and drums. The Year of the Rooster began on Saturday, January 28, and lasts until February 15 of 2018. People born in the Year of the Rooster are characterized as honest, energetic, intelligent, flexible, and confident.
In light of recent events of what's going on nationwide and worldwide, I think it's more important that we use this opportunity to come together with family, friends, community, and do what we can to get engaged in our communities.
Over at the LA waterfront, hundreds of folks came out to enjoy the third annual Lunar New Year Festival hosted by the Port of Los Angeles at Crafted. Folks got up close and personal with Chinese culture. The free community event featured traditional dancers, a petting zoo, taiko drummers, face painting, arts and crafts, calligraphy brush artistry, and a firecracker finale. Well, lots of rooster fun was also had at the Japanese American National Museum as it kicked off its own Chinese New Year celebrations. Anna Marcos takes a look.
Cock-a-doodle-doo, it's the Japanese Year of the Rooster. The Oshogatsu Festival is a family event. Kids of all ages and races have fun chasing roosters or making rooster-like arts and crafts things.
I'm going to celebrate the Japanese Rooster Year.
Some try their hand at taiko drumming, and you're never too young to start.
Yosh! Yosh! Yosh!
The candy sculpture is another big hit. I mean, who doesn't like to see swirls of all this candy goo suddenly take shape and become a horse or some other edibly sweet animal? All this fun stuff happening at the Japanese American National Museum also has a more serious side to it.
The city comes in to learn about Japanese American culture, but also, most importantly, to learn about what the museum is.
And then there are the time-after-time capsules created by this artist Sebastian Yatsuda. They look like giant plastic pillows in the background.
There'll be 20 of these in 20 cities around the world, and people will be putting in, it's a time capsule, they're time capsules, so they'll be depositing cherished memories.
I came here for the arts and crafts and to put something in the capsule so I could come back in 18 years and find out what I was doing back then.
All in all, an auspicious beginning, and by the sounds of it, a brand-new day, or maybe a brand-new year, or maybe it's just rooster feeding time. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And of course, you can visit the Japanese American National Museum and all its historic exhibits anytime. For more information, visit j a n m dot org. Well, lace up your running shoes for the annual Chinatown Firecracker Run. If you love grapefruits, here's your chance to pick your own. And it's tea time with your favorite fairies. All this and this week's things to do. It's the Year of the Rooster. The LA Chinatown Firecracker Run's annual event brings family and friends to participate in the festivities. The run includes bike rides, a 5K and 10K run walk, and a kitty run. The event will also include a lighting of the fireworks ceremony, admission to the Firecracker Festival, carnival games, and petting zoo for kitty run participants. All proceeds and donations go to local elementary schools and nonprofit community organizations, providing service and programs to benefit the community. It all takes place February 11 and 12 in Chinatown Central Plaza. For more information, visit firecracker10k.org. Enjoy a day outside and pick grapefruits with your friends and family during the Orchid Ranch annual fruit picking event. White grapefruit can be picked by hand, bring your own grocery bags or medium-sized boxes. The historic Orchid Residence is surrounded by 24 acres of gardens and a citrus orchard. The gardens include heritage oak trees, wandering garden paths, formal flower beds, and a variety of interesting specimen trees, exotic shrubs, and flowering plants. There are several significant oak trees on the property. One of the largest is more than 33 feet in circumference and is estimated to be more than 700 years old. So get your handpicked grapefruit on February 11 and 12 at Orchid Ranch. For more, visit laparks.org. Come join a fairy tea party. Each table will be hosted by one of a fairy hunt's charming fairies. English tea sandwiches, shortbreads, fairy fruit and veggies, and fairy tea will be served, catered by amazing fairy caterer. Come dressed in your fairy or princess finest attire. There'll be plenty of fun things to do, including circle time, story time with the fairies, music, dancing, and surprises. It all takes place on February 12 at 11:30 a.m. at the Tarzana Community Center. For more, visit afairyhunt.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning and welcome, Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, February 10. Thank you, colleagues, for being here. We're going to go ahead and start with a presentation. We have a very special presentation this morning, and leading it off, Councilmember
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Happy Friday, everybody. I'm going to ask our guests to join us. Today, I wanted to host this presentation to highlight the power of corporate philanthropy as promotion for positive change. Spectrum, our cable company, embodies the genuine theme of this philosophy, serving as the lead on multiple charities, including its effort to provide low-cost internet across the United States in order to restore homes in my district that sometimes can't afford or have lost internet access. In November 2016, Spectrum announced the launch of a new, low-cost, high-speed broadband service for hundreds of thousands of American seniors, families, and students across the United States. I believe it's important for corporate actors like Spectrum to play a role in bridging divides and making up for some of the unevenness in our economy that affects young people, seniors, and so many in such a dramatic way. Tomorrow, here in the city of Los Angeles, in the Hyde Park neighborhood of Council District 8 in South L.A., Together and Spectrum -- Rebuilding Together and Spectrum will provide critical repairs and renovations to four homes of Tempe, Mr. and Mrs. Hudson, and Carolyn, all in the Park Mesa Heights neighborhood. Three homes, sorry. I was trying to get a little bit more out of you guys. So three homes on tomorrow. We'll talk later about the other homes. All of these folks are homeowners. They're seniors who've been very active in our community for many, many years. Tempe runs a food bank through the community church. Mr. and Mrs. Hudson have raised their family and now are helping with their grandchildren, five of them, and have lived in their home for 20 years. And Carolyn is a retired social worker whose home recently got some pretty significant fire damage. And so tomorrow, we -- because I'll be out there with Spectrum, Councilman Sadio, we're going to have a paintbrush and a shovel. We're going to be doing exterior painting and power washing, fence and patio repairs, exterior and interior accessibility, and safety modifications such as installing lighting fixtures, repairing a broken water heater, and installing handrails so people can get around their houses a little bit easier. Tomorrow is the start of an effort of rebuilding Together and Spectrum. They will continue this, and the goal is that by 2020, they will have repaired 25,000 homes.
This sounds like it's just actually Spectrum Channel 229, which is HGTV, Extreme Makeover. I'm just saying. All right.
So, as you can see, they have -- are already playing a big role and are committing to playing a big role going forward in the future. And I want to call this stage to introduce and highlight his colleagues. Our good friend, someone who knows all of us and is no stranger to anybody doing good community work here in the Los Angeles area, our good friend Dean Leavenworth. Come on up, Dean.
Thank you, Councilmen.
Dean Leavenworth.
Thank you all for having us here today. It's great to have our folks from the corporate offices demonstrating a commitment at the local level. It's always nice when people say they're going to do things, but when people show up bringing the resources and the paintbrushes and the people, that's really important to us, and so we're very happy to have Spectrum here, working in the community with us, and I'll yield the floor. Well, to Rhonda Critchlow and Rakman Khan.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Harris-Dawson and members of the council. My name is Rhonda Critchlow, and I am proud to serve as Charter Communications Senior Vice President and Chief Diversity Officer, and I'm even more honored to be here with my colleague Rakman Khan, who heads our Corporate Social Responsibility efforts and on behalf of Charter Communications and the over 91,000 employees that we support in the United States. I'd really like to thank the council for acknowledging the work that we're doing to benefit the local Los Angeles community. Charter is a very rapidly growing company, but I think foundational to a lot of what we want to do around our business. We really sort of rely on a couple of principles. One is that we are an organization that really focuses on promoting diversity and inclusion relative to the employees that we work with, as well as thinking about opportunities where we can better understand and address the unique needs that our increasingly more diverse customer base presents. So we work very, very tirelessly to make sure that we are doing things to support the customers in the local communities where we provide products and services. I think, secondly, and I'll let Rakman talk a little bit more about this, is, you know, we really feel that from the perspective of engaging our employees as well as providing support to the local community, there's no better way for us to do that through employee volunteerism. And I'd like to acknowledge Rakman and members of his Corporate Social Responsibility team because in addition to the work that you'll see and hear about in Los Angeles tomorrow, they do efforts like this throughout the United States. And so I'll turn it over to Rakman, but again, would like to just really sincerely, on behalf of our company, thank the council for acknowledging our engagement in Los Angeles tomorrow. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So good morning, everyone. We are super pleased to be here as we prepare for our bill tomorrow in the Park Mesa neighborhood. As Rhonda said, as you all know, our company is in 41 states. We're a hugely large company, and we were looking at where do we start our 2017 bill? Where's the first place we should go? What is the state and the city that we should start at? So we looked all around the country, and we're going to 23 cities across the country this year, but we wanted to start in California, in particular, Los Angeles, because of our commitment to the community here, because of great partners, both in government and also in the community here. So we chose Los Angeles as our first place. We're super excited that we're having this bill tomorrow. We have over 75 employee volunteers going to be out there with us, along with council members and other stakeholders will be out there with us. We have one of our Los Angeles legends, James Worthy, who's going to be out there with us tomorrow, too, and others. Yeah, Big Game James, that's my man. Big Game James, my man is going to be out there with us, and I'll put a paintbrush in his hand, too, so he can get the tall spots, right? So, but we're excited because he's going to be out there with us, many others. TV One and some of the actors like Malik Yobo will be out there with us as well. And just really a community effort. And not only are we doing these three homes tomorrow, we're also giving away 250 safe-and-healthy home kits to residents. So we're not just doing the three homes in the neighborhood, but 250 of these kits were like weather stripping materials, weather radios for all the hurricanes and tornadoes and earthquakes and things like that to come. and earthquakes and things like that to come, fire alarm systems, and a bunch of other good stuff that they can use to help keep their homes safe and healthy. So, this excites us to be able to help the community, to be a part of the community. And on behalf of Charter and our employees, which we call Spectrum, our brand is Spectrum, we're just super enthused that we can be out here and making a difference in the lives of our community and our residents. So, thank all of you for your recognition, and we want to continue to work with you as we help make our community stronger and better. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much.
Excellent. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, the mayor, the council, and our city attorney, we want to present to you this recognition for Spectrum and Charter for the work that they're doing here in our city. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again, and I can't thank you enough for the partnership and everything that you guys do, certainly citywide, but in my district specifically. Truly appreciate it, so thank you so much. All right, let's go ahead and take roll and officially kick off this meeting, shall we?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Busciano, Sadio, Engler, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Carrasco, Coria, Martinez, O'Frell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Bloomingfield moves, and Councilmember Bonn in seconds. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Busciano moves, and Councilmember Sadio seconds. Next item, please.
Mr. President, before getting into this morning's agenda, there is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file Items 1B and 1D inasmuch as those liens were paid in full.
That'll be the order without objection. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number one. It's an item noticed for public hearing.
All right, and we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do.
All right, we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk. Next items, please.
Very good, sir. That brings us to Items 2 through 9. They're items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, colleagues, we'll go ahead and vote on those now. If we can open the roll. Unless anybody has special, seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Next items, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 10 through 17. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll just for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, and do we have cards on those?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
Of course. Okay, so we'll go ahead and hold those on the desk. Next item, please.
Mr. President, it is after 10:15. If you'd like to go into the special, if not, we could go to Items...
Let's go ahead and go into the special.
Very good.
And I believe an amendment has been circulated.
Yes, yes, sir. If I may, Bloomingfield, Bonn, Busciano, Sadio, Engler, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Carrasco, Coria, Martinez, O'Frell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present. That brings us to Item 18, and it is an item for which a public hearing has been satisfied.
Okay, then we'll go ahead. Mr. City Attorney.
Just for the record, the mending motion is not substantive, and it's been posted and circulated. We do not need to reopen public comment.
Great, okay. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll. It hasn't been circulated?
No.
We don't have it circulated?
I'm sorry. The amendment's not circulated.
It's been circulated. I was told it was circulated. Has it not? Oh, it has not been circulated? Okay, then we'll, you know what, we'll go ahead and recess the special meeting. No. We'll have to get it circulated. Okay, so we'll hold it for a minute. In the meantime, while we're holding that on the desk, Mr. Harris Dawson has some special guests visiting here that I know he wants to announce from LA's Promise Charter Middle School. So, if you want to call them out and special attention...
Yes, we've got sixth graders. This is the boys' field trip.
Yes.
They're coming to see the city council. Want you all to stand up, Western and 52nd Street.
All right.
You guys got to wave so they can see you on the screen here. Welcome, welcome, welcome to your Los Angeles City Council.
Fantastic. Good-looking boys. Thank you so much for being here. And if you don't, make sure you get a chance, and we'll let you know, and maybe there's somebody from the council member's office that can take David Carr, the principal who's here, as well as the boys, up to the Bradley Tower and up to the top of City Hall to go check it out because it's spectacular. If you haven't seen it, it's absolutely worth the trip. Mr. Price.
Mr. President, I just want to congratulate these young men for their outstanding achievements. And to be here today is a real inspiration for us because soon you will be sitting up here. And so, enjoy the atmosphere, look up at the ceiling, and learn a bit of history while you're upstairs in the Bradley Tower. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Another shout-out to our former city attorney who's in the house, Rocky Delgado. How you doing, Rocky? Of course, Ann. Nice to have you here. Thank you so much for being here as well.
Can we switch the camera view to the other side so they can...
I have nothing to do with that. You've got to talk to them. Can the CLA's office really be this slow?
Has it circulated yet?
Oh, here she comes.
Will we go ahead and do it now? It's been posted?
I don't know that they've posted it yet.
Let me check. Technically, it doesn't have to be circulated. Was it posted already, too? Not yet. Somebody walked over and posted it.
Here, all right. Is it, did it post it? He's, she's got the copy, so if that guy could grab it and put it on the board...
Yeah, I guess they can't. It's not in the MOU.
All right, she's on her way.
All right, colleagues, the amendment has been posted and circulated. So, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That item has been approved, and so we can... We can adjourn the special and reconvene the regular meeting. Where does that take us?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or multiple comment items.
Let's go ahead and take multiple comment items, shall we? Eric Previn, Items 1, 11, 12, 15, 16, and 17. As you're making your way up, Eric, I will not give warnings today. You know all the rules. Today's Friday. We had given you several warnings on Tuesday and Wednesday. Today's Friday. To stay on the actual agenda items only, that'll be your fair and final warning. So, Items 1, 11, 12, 15, 16, and 17.
It is Eric Previn from CD2, and I'm running for the office of Mayor of Los Angeles. Item 1 today, we are down to a mere five liens against Angelinos. Last week, there were, yesterday, Wednesday, rather, there were two. This is five. The individuals who have the intent to go after their constituents for these lien items include Martinez, who gave that moving remark last week, Coretts, Mr. Wesson, obviously, this man will not stop at anything, and under his wing newly is Mr. Rue, providing a $4,000, $5,000 lien against one of his constituents, and finally, obviously, the loyalist, the team to beat, Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson, who is enjoying a pricey luxury coffee while leaning against his constituents.
Okay, that's not on the agenda at all. So, your editorial comments about specific council members is not relating to the actual items. So, please bring it back to the items.
Again, you're interrupting me. Item number 11 is the Municipal Facilities Committee, as you well know. You are fond of putting the camera from Channel 35, which this item refers to, right on yourself while making false and fabricated comments about what's happening in this hall. The channel ITA has run into a little rent snag. They often pay $20,000 a month to Union Bank to take the top floor, but they've been engaged in a move, believe it or not, from that particular facility to here temporarily, and then eventually to the Merced Theater, where you're arranging for a $23 million upgrade. But this month, they need an extra $10,000. So, they're going from $20,000 to $30,000 a month because they have been late, they have not been able to make the upgrade, even though these fantastic cameras that make you look a little schwitzy, sir. I don't want to insult you, but we need to get that looked at so that there's not...
Okay, so you're going to forfeit your time. You were off subject.
I'm on the cameras of Channel 35.
Please, stop. Start his clock at one minute for general public comment, please. Okay, you have one minute for general public comment.
You know, someone ought to step up to him because it's a violation of the law. You can't do that. I was talking about Channel 35, which is my right. And Channel 35 has all of those things I said are happening right now, and they won't, believe it or not, provide candidate statements. They have provided 27 candidate statements. There are 77 candidates. And they did so because Holly Walcott and Ted Ross and Ted Lynn all agreed to take instructions from Herb Wesson and your team. And it's not appropriate because the people of Channel 35 who are watching today know who I am. They've heard me speak here. They know I'm a reasonable guy, and they want to see what I look like, sir. But you're constantly putting the camera on your schwitzy self, and then you make false statements. It's unbelievable. I can't believe that Mitchell O'Farrell will sit there in broad daylight and do that. And all these items that I wanted to talk about, you've taken away my time on that. Mr. Fubel, you're going to be in very big trouble about that because it is not okay. And you have tried diligently to work for Mr. Wesson and Mr. Engler, Ms. Martinez, who are violating the law. And so, I feel very badly for you because you should not be retaliated against, sir. I want that to be very clear. None of you should be retaliated against. And there are 50 retaliation lawsuits against the city.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Mr. City Attorney, did you wish to say something?
Just for the record, Item 11 was about rental of office space. It was not about what's carried on Channel 35 or anything else.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you very much. And it was off-topic, and to talk about the camera systems, it was not about office space whatsoever. So, got to stay on topic, and that's why we gave the warnings. And so, well, it was well noted. Thank you very much. All right, so with that, next items, please. Next speaker, Mr. Herman. Again, you, no warnings, items, you'll stay on 1, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. On those items only, do not yell into the microphone at all, or you'll forfeit your time. That'll be your warning for this council meeting today. Do not address the members specifically. Stay on the items. Keep in mind, there are children here as well. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, gracious one, on Item 1, on the liens. Such liens are unconstitutional, children. For this reason why we find our families losing their homes.
Don't, please do not yell into the microphone. That'll be your final warning. Thank you.
I'm far from it. So, when we talk about CD4, when we talk about CD5, when we talk about CD8, when we talk about CD6, when we talk about CD7, Ms. Nury at 12261 West Street. What about CD8, 11001 Broadway? You see, folks? They put liens on your property so you can be homeless. They put liens on your homes so we can be homeless. Isn't that a shame, children? Do we deserve to be in the streets?
You need to address these chambers, not...
My lord, I am talking to the gods about the liens, my lord. And when the liens sacrificed my neighbors to become homeless and live on the street, then Robin Hoodie has to come in and represent. Now, what other item do you wish me to go on topic on, sir? Mr. Chair?
For the cards you filled out on, just only the ones you filled out.
Thank you. Yesterday, you threw me out for no reason. I'll stay on topic. Motion of Wesson and Rue relative to funding for the Jim Gillian Recreation Center, just in public parks this morning. I represented the parks, a beautiful occasion. Paul Roth should get a raise for the great job he's done for our parks.
And we are off-topic.
And recreation, sir. Thank you. Going into Item Number 15. Can we please keep it a little down so I don't have to yell into the mic, please? There's a lot of talking going on. And I do have the floor, Mr. Chair. Now, to consider in CD10, Wesson relative funding for the security LED lights. LED lights in Los Angeles?
Thank you.
They're welcome. All of you are welcome to see the LED lights because this is what I live for, LED lights. When you probe me and followed me day after day to put the LED lights on me so the sun can shine, almighty God, Mr. Chair, hile. And then going out to Item Number, number 16, The Beast 666. Motion of Wesson relative to funding for the various repairs and services for old Washington Living Library.
Thank you very much. So, now... Okay. Please don't yell. You're, one minute for general public comment for items that are under the purview of this council.
Now, 42 U.S.C. gives me the right to exercise my First Amendment and 14th Amendment. And as Donald Trump would say to you, big ears and your little dwarf, fifth-place loser, ha, ha, ha. I'm always pointing out the truth, loser. This is why, rookie, you tell the rookie up there, that city attorney, to butt out of my business. This is my general public comment. Ralph M. Brown, that gave me that right of sovereignty, 54950 to say. And once again, on behalf of public interest, because you don't do good for the people. Woolen Hills, what happened to you, loser? You don't show up for the gas treatment. You don't show up. That's why, big ears, I'm here today to exercise my First Amendment.
All right, next speaker, please. Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler on Items 1, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Mr. Spindler's not here, so we'll go ahead and, and general public comment, not here. Okay, so we'll file his... John, you're disrupting this meeting. You're going to be asked to leave if you're going to disrupt this meeting, John? Your name has not been called? So, Mr. Spindler's not here, so we'll go ahead and note and file his cards. All right. Next speaker, Deshaun Keys. Items 1, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Please stay on those specific items.
Good morning. Where's Councilmember Coretts at? Of District 5. Where are you at?
Councilmember Coretts is not in today, sir.
No, he needs to be here today.
Okay, but you can address, you can address the entire council or forfeit your time if you'd like.
First of all, I am the federal oversight. You do not censor anyone in here.
Stick to the agendas, please, items, please.
Authority having jurisdiction. The organization of office are individuals responsible for approving equipment, material, and installation. I need to speak with the Chief Electrical Inspector of the Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety. We have a problem in Councilman Coretts' district with Crescent Heights management, and we need to take care of that right now. And I want to put you guys on notice right now that this is the federal oversight. And Councilman Coretts, you will serve federal prison. For the rest, do not say nothing.
Mr. President, I think we veered off-topic from liens onto something else.
I don't know what item you're specifically talking about.
I've sent emails...
Which specific item are you talking, are you referring to, sir?
The Department of Building and Safety. The Department of Building and Safety.
No, but on the agenda.
Councilmember, Councilmember Coretts...
You're not on the, you're not on the agenda.
Is using the Department of Building and Safety...
This is what we're going to do.
As an enforcement tool.
Sir, let's go ahead and put one minute on the clock for your general public comment. If you're going to yell into the microphone, you're going to forfeit your time. Okay?
Do not censor me.
So, we'll start your one minute for general public comment. So, now you can go ahead and go in your one minute for general public comment.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, sir.
Here's it. New construction. No newly constructed building shall be occupied in whole or in part of the violation of this code. National Electric Code, this is federal law. I have a council member violating federal law. I have a Department of Building and Safety inspector violating federal law. Do you understand that? Does anyone in here understand or respect federal law?
Excuse me, sir, you cannot yell into the microphone. Thank you very much.
Does anyone in here, anyone in this room, respect federal law? I guess not. Game on. Here's my resume, here's my number.
Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. All right, next item, please. And just so the general, the comments, excuse me, Herman, don't disrupt this meeting by standing up or clapping your hands and keep waving them as you've been by standing up because that's a disruption. And there is folks from the public that are sitting behind you, so don't want you to disrupt this meeting. Mr. Walsh on items 1, 11, 12, 13, and 15. Please stay on the items. And 11 and 12.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. Number one, again, Building and Safety Department, you do an excellent job. I've been in the same apartment since 1976. I have not one single complaint about the city, okay? I'm not one of these, "I'm going to court, I'm a white man." I'm not one of those people. Number 12, this is a ballot obligation measure for the May 16th ballot. This is review of police disciplinary matters, charter civilian review, 100% in favor of that. And we'll see how many of you are in favor of that because the police hate it. Number 17, application, proposed project, okay, this is a Sunset Boulevard project in my area. And what we're talking about here is exactly what Measure S will forbid if it's voted in. You can't, oh, the limit is only 10 stories here, but then they come in here and get a 30-story change, a change. There will be no amendments to development, preventing items like number 17 from ever happening again. Because as it stands now, the community plan, of which most of them haven't been updated in many, many years, the community plan is the plan, and you will be robbed of the power of getting on your knees in front of developers and doing the Lewinsky thing. You can take the, "I'm not one of these guys, I want every single second." You can take your minute, and I'll go into public comment when you give me my full minute. This is my, okay. Yes on Measure S. We must pass it. As you see, so many people are in favor of, even wealthy people are in favor of this because wealthy people live in the way of ugly projects. And the developers in the city council will crush wealthy Jews just the way they crush poor blacks and Hispanics. I'm telling you, you must vote for Measure S. Have you seen the commercials? Yes. Mayor Riordan is on our side. Huge amounts of money are coming in for commercials on Yes and S. You don't see people doing that. This is an important issue, and we want to stop the skyscraperization of LA, and that's what we're having right now.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please, Leah. Items 1, 11, and 13. Wine, 11 and 13. Morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Leah. I'd like to bring to your attention that there's a discriminatory process occurring with the building and safety in your liens. And what's happening is going right to the five, you've gone after five people today, and one of them is for failure to pay annual inspection fees. But people who are on the privileged inside tract are not paying their annual inspection, they're not paying any fees, they're not even paying their property taxes or building fees. The other day, I said it was rich. It's not rich, it's privileged. You have a group of privileged people who are running a secondary economy, and that's unfair. So, we're either going to have an economy where everybody complies and pays their fees, these are not loopholes, or we're going to say, okay, nobody has to pay the fees, and then you can get your fees from somewhere else. But this duplicitous is really, really unfair, and it's causing extraordinary harm, especially over in the coastal zone, which is federally regulated. Going on to the, let's see, the storage records. I just want you to know, I've had to spell, spend tens of thousands of dollars, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, of getting records. Nobody should have to pay for these records. I have one set of records that's about five inches high, I had to pay $2,300 to get a copy of the record.
You gotta, stay on topic.
Well, I am, I'm talking about your copies and your, how you're going to, how you're going to maintain them. So, are they going to be accessible to the people? Are they going to be free?
She's okay.
Is it going to be fair? Because there's this really bad system of discrimination against people who have an inside track to public records and one group of people who have no access to records. And then you say you don't have any money, but you don't collect the fees. You have a failed government.
So, Mr. President, we veered away from the issue of storeroom, storage, item 13.
Okay, so I'm going to go on to my public comment. I'll go on to my public comment.
She wants, okay.
So, my name is Leah. For more than four years, I have experienced, you know, it'd really be nice if you would listen to me. If I can come here every day and sit for a minute, you can at least give me the courtesy of one minute to listen to me, Mr. O'Farrell. Martinez, what, you don't want to listen? Is it too painful to hear? I'm four years coming here, Mr. Bonin, and you won't help me.
Please don't, ma'am, don't yell into the microphone.
I'm not yelling.
You were, and I'm asking you not to, please, thank you.
Four years, incredible, unspeakable hardship. And the one time that my council member met with me, he said he wouldn't talk about the neighborhood. So, I want to know why I have to come here. This is not what I want to do. I do not like coming and breaking my anonymity and have to be in public comment, but I am, I want you to know that my hardship is continuing. And our elected officials, our city attorney, our mayor, and our city councilmen refuse to meet with me about these problems, and you never tell me I'm wrong, not once. So, I must be right.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so let's go ahead and finish the general public comment cards in this order. Desmond Oregan, Ilana Eden, Hax Baker. Rest of you that I've called up already can start making their way up for general public comment. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for hearing me. I'm here to ask you all to...
I'll do what happened.
Sorry. I'm here to ask you all to please consider divesting from Wells Fargo, Bank of America, Citibank, and several other large banks that are investing in the Dakota Access Pipeline. That pipeline is currently threatening the water supply for 17 million people in North Dakota, as well as ignoring the treaties that our government made with these folks and the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. So, what I'm asking you to do is to follow the lead of Seattle. I can't believe I just said that. We're way better. Sorry, Seattle, it's a fact. We need to get on our game, and please divest as soon as we can. Thank you for hearing me on this issue, and I give up the rest of my time.
Great, okay, thank you very much. And we've got an announcement by Councilmember Gil Sadio. So, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you very, excuse me, for one second, Mr. Sadio.
Yes, sir.
Herman, I've already warned you five times about the animal noises and yelling out, disrupting this meeting. You've done it again, so have a nice weekend. We're going to ask you to leave. That's the last time, so we've already done it five times, this meeting alone, so have a nice, we're going to wait for you to leave council chambers. Now, you're disrupting the meeting by not leaving. Sergeant, can you please escort him out? Thank you.
For the record, he made the sound immediately after you instructed him to stop.
Yes, after I instructed him to stop, he made the sound again, so have a nice weekend. Now, you're yelling out. If you're going to yell out, we're going to ban you for a number of meetings, for disrupting the meeting. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, thank you for this brief moment. That was very embarrassing for our visitors, but as you say, the First Amendment and the Constitution is what keeps us going. I'm happy to introduce on this floor someone who everybody is familiar with, Natalie Reyes. She was former deputy mayor of the City of Los Angeles under Jim Hahn, former deputy chief of staff, and she is now president of the Salinas Foundation, a philanthropic organization tied to a Secamerica and Televisa in Mexico. She is known throughout this country on the board of the Woodrow Wilson Center, appointed by President Barack Obama on Planned Parenthood, on Hope. She is a leader and an inspiration for women and men throughout this country, and no less throughout this world with her international travels. She is joined by Elisa Salinas, who's an entrepreneur from the television industry, but more importantly, she's here, she works with Muay Thai and mixed martial arts, and is here to work with us on a series of pilots that we will be creating in using Muay Thai and its philosophy and traditions to work with at-risk youth, low-income youth, to develop a new generation of disciplined and thoughtful leaders from our community. And so, I'd like to welcome both of them to the city council, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for being here. Now, it's great to see you as well, as always. Thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and go back over to, is Elena Eden still here? Come on up. Is Hax Baker here? Come on up. Lydia Ponce? Lydia still here? Yes? All right. Morning. Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. I just wanted to echo the previous speaker and urge the council to take whatever action it can to oppose the Dakota Access Pipeline. I realize that there's not a lot potentially materially that LA could do, but I think there is, there are some things, including divesting from Wells Fargo and passing a resolution. And I think it's really important to do every, to take every avenue that we can to protect indigenous people and, yeah, and show that we are going to continue to support all of the things that we stand for, even if the federal government doesn't. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Morning.
Good morning. I'm also echoing the comments before me. I urge you to voice your opposition to the Dakota Access Pipeline. It hurts indigenous people's rights as well as the environment of our country. I also want to urge you to protect the families in California and Los Angeles County who are currently facing deportation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Morning.
Morning, Lydia Ponse. September, the resolution to support Standing Rock was passed by this council, and I thank you for that, but now it's time to put some muscle behind that and send the message to Trump. Send him a copy of that resolution. They, he stopped the EIS, it's much equivalent to our EIR here in California, but be about the real change. Are we the city of oily angels, or are we just the city of angels? We need to divest from the Bank of America Chase, Citibank, Wells Fargo, switch to the credit union because the funding that have the money, the profits that we are reaping are attached to the missing and murdered indigenous women globally. There are man camps that employ 2,000 men, and it is known that the women are disappearing from those particular pipelines. If you want us to reelect you, you need to really be about it, not just the 750,000 women in the march. You have to be about the women every day. So, I'm asking that you really do sincerely, from the bottom of your hearts, send a copy to Trump today individually and tell him that you support, or agendize it and send it as a city council. Thank you.
Great, no, thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, Marco. Still, come on up. Paula Khan. And then followed by our last speaker, Jim Summers.
Good morning. My name is Marcos Emmanuel of the American Indian Movement of Southern California. I was at Standing Rock for two months fighting against the Dakota Access Pipeline and the state of North Dakota and corruption there in Morton County. As was known, this council passed a resolution, and this council has to stand by that resolution and do whatever it can to support the people of Standing Rock by divesting and removing all this money from these major banks that are funding the pipeline, funding Energy Transfer Partners and Sunoco. I think as a people, as a city, as communities, we have to stand by our word. We are nothing if we are not about our word. And I'd like to take my last few seconds to acknowledge the people, the original people of this, of this city and of this county, the Tongva people. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Paula Khan. I am Kiche Mayen. We're on Tongva, occupied Tongva land right now. I was also at Standing Rock in early December, and I'm here to ask you all to send a copy of the resolution you signed in September 2016 to the Trump administration and make it loud and clear that Los Angeles upholds the rights of the Standing Rock Sioux. In the past year, from 2015 to 2016, there was a reported 69 incidents of gas leaks and ruptures in pipelines that Energy Transfer Partners operates. It is absolutely detrimental for us and for the youth who were just in this room earlier that we take action to shift what kind of energy we use. In the 1940s or 1950s, it was General Ford that totally bought out all of the public transportation in Los Angeles so that we would have to rely on fossil fuels.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Granada Hills. Recently, there was a public hearing at Granada, about Granada Hills Plaza, an overbuilding in Granada Hills. Actually, all we need to do is have government code and obey government code 65915, which is a fair argument standard that says you need an EIR. We need an EIR on this. People are going to get killed. Earthquake country, next to a wash, sandy soil, and they're talking about four-story buildings. The other thing they did is they removed our Q condition, which is incredible. And I didn't realize this until they told me there, some of the people. It happened 10 years ago at Coles. The other day, on February 3rd, when I asked Councilman Englander to resign, he kind of like didn't do it. So, he remembers me from Coles. It's absolutely wrong to do, and we're going to recall him.
All right, thank you, Jim. Good luck with that. And with that, that concludes all the general public comment and all the comment cards. Mr. Clerk, where does that take us?
Mr. President, would you like to vote on a number of the remaining items?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Actually, we've got two votes on 14, so we'll open the roll, and then we'll take a second vote for the amended circulated item 14.
And just for the record, the substitute for 14 is a technical non-substantive change.
Great, thank you very much for that. Okay. Okay, so with that, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and then the substitute on fourteen, so please go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, open the roll. Go ahead and open it first. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so those items are approved. What's before us now?
Mr. President, you have items one, ten through thirteen, and fifteen through seventeen.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take those items. We'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, those items are approved. Thank you very much. What is before us now?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
All right, then those items are posted and referred. That should clear the desk.
Yes, sir.
Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Any announcements? No announcements? Okay. Adjourning motions. So we can all please rise for adjourning motions? Looking to my right, seeing none. Looking to my left, and seeing none. All right, so we don't have any adjourning motions, and while everybody is still... I asked everybody to please rise. You can use that as a standing ovation to this meeting. No, thank you very much for... That concludes the agenda. We are officially adjourned. Have a great weekend and be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you, please.
...